How do you plan to take vacation?
Just go with it. Okay, so 3410. Quite an extensive, very detailed budget. We break it down, so every penny is accountable as much as possible. So does anybody have any questions about anything in 3410?
I guess the only thing that I again note is that we have almost a million dollars in capital expenditures that we're basically charging off as an annual expense.
Yeah, that you have stated, and that's one way of looking at it, absolutely. So just for point of reference, the 800,000 there that's budgeted for the large apparatus, that's the second half of the payment that's due for the ladder truck that we should be getting by the May of 2025 or April, right? Earlier? Oh, great.
No, we may be getting, I thought it was November or January.
No. We could have built quite January.
Yeah, January.
January, yeah, so it's earlier than anticipated.
Excellent. You gonna do a wet down in the middle of winter?
No.
An ice down?
Hold off till.
Yeah. So the first payment we made was almost a year and a half ago. We did use reserve funds for that. We have since been replenishing the reserve funds, which you'll see later in the budget. If we did not have this payment, we would be under the tax cap. So there's that. So that's pretty good, I think. And the other one that James pointed out was the fire chief's vehicles. Normally, we do one every three years. We got a little bit off schedule for that. As you can see, we haven't bought one since the 2020-2021 budget. So we're doing two, they're requesting for two for this fiscal year.
I think we didn't do last year, we're doing the latter. I didn't know what to try to also.
But we are going to try to get back on cycle.
Yeah, that's the goal.
Right, because my.
We also had some issues with chiefs not doing their terms.
Throw it off, yeah. My fear is, is that if we buy two now, at some point, we're going to buy two again, but we're going to try to get back on the every-three-year cycle.
Yep.
Awesome. So those were the two expenses that James pointed out. Is there any other questions about the operating budget for the fire department? You can see a lot of things went down, thank you for that. Some things went slightly up, couple hundred here and there. And then at the very bottom of the budget is his reserve fund. We are putting in 150. Again, we've been kind of consistent to that commitment, understanding that in order to be fully compliant with NFPA, the chief, it does recommend, and we do about 350 a year. As far as taxpayers go, that's kind of hard. So 150 is what we've committed to. Again, I haven't done it this year because we don't do it until the end of the year in case something comes up that's uncontrollable. We could still be able to use it before we put it in there. But that'll be done once the budget is adopted.
Chris, what's your next vehicle that would need to be replaced? So the problem we have now is we have two. So there's a tanker, which is 1999.
Okay, wow.
NFPA states anything over 20 years cannot be in service. So is it in service? Yeah. Do you run a liability? Yes. So tanker and now engine 525 is also coming. In four years, it'll be 20 years. So we have two apparatus that hopefully have to be replaced. Could be refurbished, the tanker could be refurbished, which is maybe a cheaper option where you rebuild the pump and basically redo the vehicle. It's an option we have, but that doesn't buy you over 20 years, buys you now. Buys a tanker.
Yeah.
Buys a tanker. So it's a little bit of a kick the can down the road. The issue we're running into now, as you guys saw with the ladder and also surrounding departments, is they're like a million and a half dollars for just a regular engine. So it's just the things are going through the roof. Not only that, they're taking, Solberg Mills is four years to build. Four years. Which surpasses anyone in your terms, which is insane. Or my turn for that matter. So we're running into a lot of issues with that. So we, I had a whole white paper I wrote years ago about apparatus replacement and what you would need, and that's where that 3 million comes in, understanding there's issues that you may not be able to do that, but that's kind of where we sit. So 150 is kind of consistently putting us behind, you know, the ball, but it's, we're dealing, we're doing what we have to do with what we have.
And quite honestly, if those two vehicles are coming up at the same time, that may be something to consider, Mr. James's suggestion, that we do bond those trucks because those would be two large purchases. The issue with that is, is that when you bond it, you do have to budget for the bond payment, which historically I have shown, and I'm sure you can relate, when it was the fire district, when you bond for a bond payment, then that usually reserve payment goes away because you're using that money for the bond payment instead of the reserve payment. So as long as whoever you, if you're all still here, or whoever's coming after you guys commits to still funding the reserve fund while also making said bond payment, that's something to consider, but you can't make that promise to future, on a future board's behalf.
I think what we would propose to, in light of that understanding, the taxpayer situation, is we would not ask for both at one time. We would ask for one and then just have the space. And you're gonna, a little bit of liability, but it's a trade-off.
Mm-hmm.
So I think we would do that because I just think it could be a tremendous amount of money.
Yeah.
We're talking probably half of the budget for just two fires.
Right.
Yeah, so, you know.
Is this something we could try and find grant money for, possibly?
We do try.
Yeah, I mean, keep, I mean, keep trying, though, of course.
We've submitted grants for the last three years. We're very stuck in the middle of it. We're working on one for the tanker.
Yeah.
Yeah, which we've talked for the past two years, we haven't done it now. Because understanding, you go to Tennessee, you see some of these smart companies, that's who's getting the money, like we're very, it's unfortunate for that. Yeah, it's like we're, exactly. We're kind of right in the middle, you know?
Is there a potential for us to get a bond to cover the balance of the ladder truck and the original tap of the reserve fund, so that we have a bond for a million and a half on that truck?
I hate to always be the one to have to tell you no sometimes, because I feel bad doing that, but when it comes to bonding, it has to be for something you haven't already expended, because you have to adopt SECR requirements. So you can't just say, we want to bond 3 million for this potential thing. You actually have to adopt SECR, you actually have to have quotes in hand, and then you can bond. You can't bond and just put the money in reserve for when it's needed. Bonding is when you need it now. So we can't do it for.
The truck isn't coming till next year.
But we've already committed half the amount already, so we can't bond for the existing ladder truck. We could bond for the two vehicles that he just spoke about, 525 and the tanker. That we could be, we could bond for. They'd have to, we'd have to have the bond attorney get together with Kelly, put together all the SECR that's related to that, which shouldn't be so complicated, so it's not really environmental, right? And then we could shop around for a bond. Your financial advisors, munistat, will let you know how long you could probably do it for. I think it's 10 years, but that's just off the top of my head. I don't, that's just a number that's popping in my head for that. So that is something we can perceive, and then we can get that process started. Because his, they're all state bid, we don't go out to bid for that because it's such a unique niche kind of thing. So we would be able to get figures pretty quickly. I mean, you'd have to form your truck committee and all that.
Oceans tanker, the pay you for spare bones, I have that package.
Right.
So you have a pretty good price line.
But you have policy and procedure to follow, right? You have to have the truck committee go to get, meet and put something together, or is that something you can bypass?
It depends on what you need, what you require.
Okay.
If you need like an actual pay, you know, like a spec to bond, then you have to just, we'll get.
So it's something to consider. I would say, let's consider it in June or July, so it falls into the next fiscal year instead of this fiscal year, and putting numbers in that we don't have that are concrete or known. Because when you borrow the money, you don't got to start paying it for a year later, anyway. So maybe that's something to work on in the summer, to get those numbers together. And then if you did want to go to bond, we can, maybe we'll know more about Pine Hill by then, and we can just do one super bond, because that's all subject to permissive referendum also. So you don't want to, you know, do all this work, and then somebody walk a petition, forcing a public vote, and the vote says, nope, which you guys have experienced numerous times when you've bonded trucks. Yes. And the building. So, I mean, the fire department, for those of you who may not have lived here then, we've failed two or three bond resolutions. Yeah, same thing. So there's that.
Truck can't need to go up from 150 to say 200?
Yes, that's a no-brainer.
Unless we're bonding. If we're going to do that bonding thing.
Yeah, it's funny, if you bond and you do one thing over 10 years, you're probably out, that's what you're at.
Yeah.
Now, two more, you will act, you have to think about that. I think we would do the tanker next season, and then 525, just have the space out based on that.
Didn't you say one of those takes four years to get, or no?
Well, we don't know, that's what they're experiencing now, so it very well could, could go down, I mean, but I don't see it.
Boss seems to only go up.
But what I would say about that might be is that if you lock it down, give it four years, at least if something happened, you're like, you were proactive as a board, and you, it just was procurement that they might have, right? That's where I think you're at, at least taking that step.
Yeah. I agree, and like I said, you know, if we're going to do the two at once, I think it's definitely the bonding option. But then that would be for the budget of 24, 25, 26, thank you.
Summer, the new budget will be had.
Yeah, this way the first payment wouldn't be due until then.
Now, the old chief vehicles will go out to bid?
They'll go out to auction.
Auctions, right.
And so will eventually the truck that this one is.
We don't budget anything for that potential.
We can't buy, I mean, I, you don't know. I mean, during COVID, our vehicles were selling for crazy amount of money at auction because no dealerships had cars, right? So we were getting crazy money in our vehicles, even last year, right? I don't know, I mean, I'm not up on the whole car trade, but you don't know. You can't predict the auction values.
So the idea is, we have, so we have three chief's cars and an utility vehicle. So what's been happening recently is the chief's cars have been going out, but Brian still has, we use that utility vehicle as the third car, or it's used as utility during the fire operations. We would, right now, that's the oldest, we're auctioning that, and then we would auction one of the two newer ones, they're not new, but they're newer than that. So you would have two go into auction, and then you would move one of those, the newest one to that, or from like utility vehicle. So you'd still be auctioning off two.
Right. But again, what we've normally done is when we've gone out to auction for their vehicles, whatever comes in, goes right into their reserve fund.
That's what I was going to ask. Mike, yes, that's what I was going to ask, does it go to reserve?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, unless he had plans for something specific to use that money for, it would go into reserve. Like sometimes Rob knows that when he sells that vehicle, it's because he's going to use that money for something, you know? Anything else for the fire? I just want to remind the board that this is when you guys ask your questions. Once we're done here, the final preliminary budget will be put together, and that's when the public asks their questions. So I wanted to make sure you get all your answers, questions answered, so that when we have the public hearing, it's time for the public to talk.
Two questions for me.
Mm-hmm.
All these grants at the bottom here for the video and all that stuff have been expended and used, I mean, since they're not carried over.
Yep, that was a special grant that our grant writers were able to get for us. It was $146,000 for recruitment efforts. And there's also one at the top, the PPE equipment one, was from the grants as well. So once the timeline drifts, they'll drop off. But since there's still history, I can't drop them off for another two years.
And then I'm surprised I didn't know this already, but the Central Valley Firehouse is a lease?
Yep. We did try, yeah.
They were not willing to sell. Rent the bottom space out, restore the brush truck.
And UTV, and it's a training, it's a training facility.
And they use it as a training facility, so that lease actually was set at 2250?
It's at, yeah, it's at 2250 now. It was higher, it doesn't expire until 2035, I think, off the top of my head. It was signed, Charlie Barker was the attorney then. It was signed pre-Village. But when the Village was formed, the fire district became no longer, and.
It was like 25, 50?
It was a 30 or 35, 40, something like that. Yeah. So 35-year lease. Yeah. You are good with math. Maybe you should have my job. So, yeah, we, yeah, that's what that is. But like I said, and the mayor said, we did try to purchase the buildings so that it wouldn't be something, but it's owned privately by the members, so. And they decided, they voted against it. Okay, any other questions for the fire chiefs?
That's all I got.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
We appreciate you. No pizza for you, you exited in time. All right, let me get Bobby.
I appreciate all you do.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Bye, guys.
So we're waiting, Bobby Blair's going to come in, so let me just give you a little bit of background about Bobby Blair's department. For the longest time, we didn't have a buildings and grounds individual that was, all fell on to myself and Jessica, because, you know, we're experts at plumbing and heating and all that other stuff. Finally, the board agreed that we needed a budget, a buildings and grounds person, and that caused a lot of line items to shift for accountability purposes. So you're going to see a bunch of zeros in central administration that has been broken out under operations of buildings and grounds. We even took it a step further, since we added the Adam Street Building to our operating list, to separate expenses for Village Hall and separate expenses for the building department. So that's what the BG-VH is, that's just for the Village Hall, which is everything to do with this building. And the BG/BD is just for the operation of the Adam Street Building. Buildings and grounds. So a lot of this, a lot of this is still estimated because we haven't had enough history with the Adam Street Building to be able to compile enough data to do like an average, because it only has been operational since November of last year. So, like I said, it's still a estimated process, so we're limping through it.
We're starting 1620, 401?
1620 is Robert's, yep, point one, obviously, we're going to do later.
BG-VH, right?
BG-VH is the first one in his budget, yep.
Making sure I'm on the right.
You are on the right page. Come on down! This is our second, but it's going to be, as I was stating, you know this already, but I was stating, we don't have enough history to, with the Adam Street, to be able to fully do some accurate averaging of budget estimates. And we also have separated Village Hall and building department, so we can be more accountable in our expenditures. And we also, you know, now have somebody who's doing work in the building that has been just falling in disrepair because neither Jessica or I are carpenters, or plumbers, or electricians. Claudia's here because Claudia is assigned in the clerk's office to be Bobby's point person when it comes to bills and whatnot. So she helps Bobby out, so Bobby has one person to go to to help with all that kind of stuff. So everybody, this is Claudia. So 1620 is Bobby's budget. The first half is anything related to Village Hall utility expenses and general repairs. Middle half is anything related to the building department utilities and general repairs. And then the bottom part is just a catch-all for whatever he needs, as far as cleaning tools, maintenance of the outside, gas for his building, whatnot. Does anybody have any questions?
The first one I had was on the electric for the Village Hall.
Mm-hmm.
This doesn't seem, there's no 2022 electric with it, because it was someplace else?
Yep, I just explained that, but I'll explain it again, no problem. So if you look up onto central administration, 1610.405, there's zero budgeted there now because that used to be anything that was not in a specific department, meaning highway or anything general fund departed. So now we've broken that out for just Village Hall and just building department. Keeping in mind that then, the Adam Street Building had a very, very small electric bill because there was nothing going on there.
I'm looking at, it was 25,000, 2023, actually. And if it's being now pulled over to 402, it seems like there's a a big difference in, between the actual and the amount that's been budgeted for.
So it was actual 25,000 in '22, '23. We budgeted 15,000 for this year. We are already over budget by that. So the number that's in the tentative budget, which is 17,000, again, I'm rounding up for purposes, that includes the bills as of January. So we still have February, March, April, and May. So based on that, I'm suggesting 23,000, which is still less than what we actually spent in '22, '23.
Maybe I'm reading this wrong, if it's 25,000, actual, in the, that's, looks like I got the wrong one, 405?
I'm sorry, I thought you said 402 electric.
405.
Okay, so 405 electric in 1610.405, which was from two years ago. We spent 25,000.
Right. Isn't that the same as the 402 now?
Nope, because that included the Adam Street Building and the Village Hall Building.
They were just combined.
They were combined because we had no reason to separate them out. Now we're being more accountable, and we're separating them out. Okay? So like I said, I base that, we have five more months, February, March, April, May, four more months of bills coming in. We're currently at 17,000. Obviously, we use more electric in the wintertime because it gets darker. So I'm guessing 23,000 is my estimate for the budget for that, for just Village Hall Electric, which also includes downstairs, by the way, not just up here.
With Adam Street, it's an energy-efficient building when you guys rehabbed it and everything, with the light and all that?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. I don't know about, what about this building now?
This building had all done as well, but this building is pretty much a 24/7 building because of the fire department downstairs. We pay for the electric for the entire building, it's not just this level up here. And the electric that I budgeted for the building department is 3,000, because that building's only used eight to four, Monday through Friday.
Okay, thank you.
And again, we don't have a lot of history, because we only started using that building in November. So 3,000 might not be enough to cover it, but we can always do a modification if need be, because I'm only, I've only got a couple of months' history to be able to judge that when it's fully operational. Any other questions for 1620?
Well, if it's really expensive, we can put solar panels on it. Well, if it's really expensive, we can put solar panels on it.
Any questions?
No.
All right. Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Bobby.
All right. So let's go to the top and work our way down for the odds and ends, which would be the smaller budgets that don't have a huge impact on the budget. And then we can do our executive session to discuss all the personnel stuff. So the revenues that were not already discussed, I'm just gonna list them, yell out if you have a question. Interest on property taxes, occupancy tax, sales tax, franchise fees, clerk fees, vital statistics fees, interest and earnings, permits, other, fines and forfeiture bail, forfeiture of deposits, sale of equipment, and everything down further. Does anyone have any questions? That would be the occupancy tax. And we've only received one so far, even though we should have received a couple of more for December, and then March, we should have, is when they have to pay again. Kelly is working on lighting some fires under the hotels for that. But I used the number that the town budgeted, since it's the same percentage.
Our occupancy tax covers hotels, motels, Airbnbs.
Well, we don't have any Airbnbs registered in Woodbury, so. We have three hotels, we have the Rushmore, we have the Hampton Inn, and we have the one across from, next to the dugout, which isn't the dugout anymore. Whatever it's called. So we have, we have three hotels in Woodbury that are registered. One of them have paid their fee for November, the other two have not, and plus now March is here, and that's another quarterly payment that's due. So again, since we have no history on it, I used what the town budgeted, because the town's interest percentage rate is the same as ours. So we're at 150 is what I put there.
And they're all where?
They're where? They're registered. Jessica has sent, I would think, two notices now, saying you're late. We've now turned it over to Kelly.
Is it like, you think it's like a protest kind of thing?
I don't know if it's a protest thing, or if... He's the one who completely, yeah, the one who called and screamed and yelled that Jessica actually paid. So that's great. I don't know if it's because our quarterly payments is different than a calendar year's quarterly payments, because ours are December, March, May, and September, whatever it is. Everyone else's is, you know, it's a calendar quarterly year. I don't know, like I said, but Kelly's looking into it. And again, I just took the number that the town budgeted, because they have experience and we don't. Any other questions on any of those revenues that are not already covered under other departments?
2,300?
2,300. Transportation, we covered that with Robert's budget. But we can talk about it again, if you'd like. That's the gas that we get from all the other departments that use our gas tanks at this Highway Department.
Oh, is this how it comes in?
Yeah, we, I can list them again for you, if you'd like. Okay.
I'm just trying to sort out.
Yep. Yeah, because some revenue is department-specific, so we talked about it when they were here, because they couldn't, yeah.
Right, but this is where you're charging.
This is the revenue income that comes in from the town departments and the village departments that use our gas tanks. Any other question on any interests, I mean, any revenue funds? I am gonna, in June, Lakeland Bank has a CD that's at 5% for nine months. I'm gonna be doing that then, at the start of our fiscal year, so that we can get higher interest. I mean, our accounts are almost at 4% now, so we are getting pretty good interest rate. Some of them are higher than that, yep. So I am gonna look into some CDs to invest some of the money in, so we can...
Are you limited to where you can invest it?
Well, they have to be government-protected. You can't just go in other places, you know, anything that doesn't have FDC 105.
FDIC, yeah.
They do. And we have an account with them, so it works out pretty good. But I'm gonna be, I think, I mean, we're earning some seriously great money now on our accounts, but I'm gonna do some investigations to do some other areas that...
I've been getting over 5.39, 5.25, just down the street. I've put booster money into that kind of stuff, just because...
But you want to make sure it's something that doesn't cause a lot of administrative costs as well. You know, because some of these investing, some of these companies out there, they tell you, oh, you're gonna make all this money, but it's constant administrative, like the New York class and whatnot. It's constantly, I was speaking to Eileen about it. Yeah, that's what I'm talking to, yeah. So we're looking into it, but I think 150 is a pretty safe number. Hopefully, it'll be even more, which would be great. Anything else on revenue? 3,001. 3,001, that's the state aid from the state. It's always 27,000. There is legislation to increase that, but that legislation never passes, so I don't want to raise it more in case it doesn't pass. But that comes from the state's AIM funding, yep. That's state aids-AIM. It would be great if they gave us more, but there was a couple of years we didn't even budget it, because we weren't even sure we were gonna get it, so. And I think Matt would have an in on that, to let us know where we're at with that.
I'm gonna say no comment due to work, but yeah, there's, it's, they go back and forth for a year.
Sure.
It's gonna be flat, probably.
Mortgage tax, we are not gonna make what we even budgeted. That 700,000 there that you see is because a payment for, the second payment for the mortgage tax came in after we closed the books the previous year. So unfortunately, the calendar year for the county doesn't always line up with our calendar year. And I have to close the books and file a report with the state by a certain date, and the money came in later. So we are at where we're at, so that's why I'm dropping it to the 250. Any other questions on revenue?
With the occupancy tax, again, if we could get the revenue coming in, I guess it would be better. Maybe that's, is that something for like, I guess, Mike to enforce, with like permits for like Airbnbs or something like that? Yeah, which we're setting up the court for. Most folks aren't in residential communities.
Yeah, I think somehow it was floating around on the table.
Thank you, I appreciate that. All right, so any other questions on the revenue for the general fund? Now it's time to ask. Yeah, I decided that, you know, that's not gonna happen. Okay, moving down to Village Board, which is 1010. So equipment, we're going to need to upgrade the wonderful microphones that some of you don't use properly, and some of them don't work properly. Gotta like talk into it like this, that doesn't always happen. And I think we're also going to be upgrading the Owl, correct, mayor? Yes. The Owl. Five for the Owl, and then five for audiovisual, is what I'm estimating. That could be high, it could be low, I'm not entirely sure. I am not an expert when it comes to audiovisual. But that's the guesstimate. I believe we got that number from Mr. Gerver, who did do some research, yep. Videographer, we had to rebudget for Jeffrey, because we haven't budgeted for him, because we've been using the Owl. So in the event that the Owl doesn't come to fruition, I had to budget for it. It's 75 bucks a meeting, times two months, meetings a month, times 24. And the only other thing that we put in here that we had not done before was, oh, I'm sorry. Grant writer, we didn't know that the town was gonna split it with us, so that's why we budgeted the 36,000. Now we know the town has committed to splitting with us, so that's that number there. Climate Smart? The Climate Smart? So she asked for 26,000. She does have a $5,000 grant coming in at some point, hasn't come yet. Okay.
Yeah, there's a lot of, Lisa has a lot of plans, and we do want to get a lot of stuff done with Climate Smart. The farmers market... Yeah, I'm the liaison, but the farmer's market is kind of on hold right now, and probably will not happen this year, unless we can get a venue secured. We've been having issues with that.
Can you just talk in the microphone? Because with the fans on now, I did turn the heat off, so we could hear each other, but then it got kind of cold in here. And for me to say that means it was cold.
Is it working?
It is.
Okay, good.
You just gotta like talk into it.
So the Climate Smart Committee, once again, they're doing, they're trying to do a farmer's market this year, but we're having trouble with venues, so a good chunk of that budget was towards farmer's market. I think she had linked to the top.
Right now, we put 10 in there. They asked for 26, minus 5.
I think, well, originally, it didn't have a line item at all, no?
It did, 5,000.
You just had a grant, yeah.
No, 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 it always had a line item of 5,000.
Okay.
Going back to 22, 23.
I would say doubling the line item is generous, but, you know, and maybe from there, we can try and get some grants and things, and YsRDA DC.
Yeah, and we can't budget for the 5, because we're not sure when it's coming. If we knew it was coming after June 1st, I could totally throw it in here. But we're not sure if it's coming before that.
I am the liaison. Lisa did, I don't know exactly where she, I've tried to figure out where she got some of these numbers, and we did have input together with the rest of the group. But I would say 15,000's a good starting place, and we can make things work, I think, from there, hopefully.
So we're gonna put 10,000 in here. When the grant check comes in, we can do a modification to recommend, to... Recognize the 5,000 grant, and then increase this by the other 5,000, which will bring a total of 15. Does that make sense, everybody? So we're keeping it at 10. I also budgeted, for the first time ever, transportation and travel and schools and dues for the Village Board, based on discussions I had with trustee Cirilio. I didn't say that right. I'm sorry. I'm tired. And trustee Fryman.
Is this gonna give us the NICOM membership?
So the NICOM registration, the class that's coming up in May, is $325 a person, which I am so shocked about. I've never paid more than $100 to register for a conference. That doesn't include all your meals, or your hotel. So I budgeted schools and dues, 2,000. So that would, this is just Village Board, it doesn't include the mayor. So 2,000 would cover four of you to go to that, if you chose to do so, and then have a little bit of extra for something, other classes that may come up. And then I budgeted 6,000 for transportation and travel, so that gives each of you 150 for hotel and mileage. I'm sorry, 1,500 for hotel and mileage. I'm sorry. I've got numbers going up crazy in my head right now. So 6,000 would give you each 1,500 for travel and hotel and mileage, and then 2,000 gives you each 500 for conference registration. I just, again, based this on the upcoming annual school in May, not if you do anything extra, like you went to the February legislative session.
So we don't have a budget for this, the one that's coming up in May?
We do not. No, the Village Board has never gone to anything that was paid. It was all the free stuff, the webinars and whatnot that were online. I can keep it in, I can take it out, it's up to you guys, I just need direction, because I put it in based on the emails and discussions that I heard.
I have no intentions of knowing.
We're not on your budget right now, so.
NICOM had a lot of great information on cannabis and climate issues.
I said, I mean... I found the webinars helpful that I took, I mean, I don't even think, I don't even remember if I reimbursed or not, it was just 100 bucks. But even those four webinars were, and they were only an hour apiece, were very, you know, at least for me, very helpful. I know they have all types of different webinars each year, when they go up there, like, they have cannabis, they have water, yada, yada, zoning, yada, and so on, so on, but, I mean...
And just remember that you guys are not buying agents for the Village.
No.
So if you do need to spend any money, you need to come, go see Jessica, or myself. Which we would do your registration, we would do everything that's required, I just need to know what I'm doing with these numbers. Because this is your budget.
I personally am a proponent for education, and I think it's a good idea when you're with peers from other municipalities to, or get ideas from other people. So that's why I've asked about it, and I see these things. I haven't personally been to one to say if it has any value or not, so I think I'd have to attend it, and then make a determination there.
Yep, just remember that the annual school is in May, so, which is different than the legislative session that you attended. You would probably get more from the annual school, because the legislative session is only about stuff that's currently pending in Albany, with the Senate and Assembly.
The legislative session, I'm not allowed to go to.
Right, right, right. That's why I'm saying, the school itself is the better one to go to, because that would be the actual training, and not just about specific things that are hot topic at the current time. Sorry, I'll keep it in there, and then we can go from there. I just wanted to point that out, though, because when we sit here this time next year, you wouldn't have spent anything, because the conference isn't until May. Okay? I mean, you might, you might have spent registration, but I'm sorry.
We might be registered.
You might be registered, yep. Next is the mayor, who has no operating expenses at all. Again, we'll talk about personnel under executive session. Audit expense, we are gonna need to have a simple audit done this year, because we have expended more than $750 in FEMA money, which would be the ARPA money we spent for the Troutbrook Bridge. So it's only a simple audit that's required. So I budgeted 5,000 for that company that we used to did the ARPA reporting for us last year. I'm just gonna keep going until somebody stops me with a question, okay? Tax collection, we did eliminate a lot of line items here, because it used to be an individual, a separate person, now it's in the clerk treasurer's office. So these are just her operating expenses, when it comes to tax collection. Obviously, you see, we haven't spent anything yet, because the taxes haven't gone out yet. Village Clerk Treasurer, that's all of our operating expenses. The only thing that really went up is the website, which is something that we contract with admins for. And that's for their hosting, and any type of maintenance that we need in addition, and above and beyond what Jessica actually does there. Consultants, that's your attorney, your engineer, planner, which we really haven't used a planner in quite some time. There's three departments mixed in here, there's you, planning board, zoning board, they are pretty much labeled separately, so you could see what is what. This one, I, it's, I'm basing it on past experience, you could see, we did higher one year, lower the next year. Their bills are two months behind, so that only includes through December, possibly January. The planning board and zoning board, the planning board, usually, a lot of that's charged to the applicant, so that's why you see low fees there. Moving on, I don't anticipate an election, so I didn't budget anything there. Records management supplies, that's all of my folders, I mean, Jessica's folders and boxes, anything records management-related. She did apply for a grant to get a map copier scanner, and for shelving, so hopefully, she gets approved for that grant. Then central administration, a lot of this dropped off, because we separated it out to Buildings and Grounds, but you've got payroll expense, that's ADP. Our real estate taxes that we have to pay, that's not, mostly just special areas on the town and village tax bill, not general. We did custodian already. Central government, which we're dropping down to 1650.401. We did custodian already, central government, which we're dropping down to 1650, .401 telephone. That's the shared expense with the town that we pay for the phone system that we have here. Plus our long distance calling. Central printing is for us to buy paper, which we try to conserve as much as possible, because we are moving towards the digital age. Sorry for those that don't like that, I apologize. Yeah.
Do you know anything about when they're talking with the supervisor, I know they're looking into, because they've had phone issues and phone issues and phone issues. They're tied to their system, they are looking into, I don't know if we're involved with that or what.
So they're lead agent on it. The current system, we're locked in until October or November is when the lease is up. Just to give you a point of reference, the whole point of this system was so that we didn't have to tell residents, you need to hang up and dial. We're able to transfer calls to every department with the exception of library. So someone calls here and says, I wanna talk to the senior center, we can transfer them to the senior center and vice, alright? Without this system, I, I can't keep telling residents, you gotta go somewhere else, or you gotta call somewhere else, it's just, it's just not.
It just, the system was down, right?
We do not, we do not, so. Right. I've been speaking to Laura, I think there was possibly, the, there's been a lot of different things looked into, the hope that maybe we could still keep the phones and not have to buy new phones. I don't know where that's at, honestly, it's, it's a headache I didn't need on my desk. It's a huge headache for Laura and she's amazingly doing a great job with it. But they're basically gonna be the lead agent, because all the equipment is, the server part of it is there, because these phones here are all wifi based, whereas the ones over there are hard lined in. So it is gonna be what it is, we share the cost 50/50.
I just told her, I just told her just to keep us in the loop.
Yep.
Because I wasn't sure what the additional cost would be or.
I don't know either, that's why I kept the 25, we can always do a modification, maybe it'll be less, fingers crossed, doubt it though, but you don't know.
Hopefully it's a similar system with less downtime.
Well, that's the problem, the, the software is no longer supported, so the software keeps crashing.
Oh.
But we have to keep it until the lease is up in October or November, I can't remember which date, which one it is to be exact, and I don't like to throw out wrong stuff, so it's October or November. Just about, it seems like mostly on Mondays, I don't know if something happens on the weekends that pings the system. It's very frustrating, although we get a lot of work done when the phones don't ring.
So you're saying it could be an inside job?
It could be an inside job.
Just kidding, just.
That's it, so central printing is our copy paper, central postage is our postage. IT data processing is our IT guy, it seems like it's a lot, it's because our previous IT guy who was an on-call basis, single owner, he retired, so we had to find somebody else. I will tell you that these guys, they weren't the most expensive quote we got, but they, which is good, but they're also literally available 24/7. I just sent a text and they're literally in my computer seconds later, fixing the issue. Also, this includes replacing, we have a computer replacement program with them, they tell me what needs to be either computer replaced or just upgraded drive-wise. So, I don't know, insurance, that's all of our liability coverage. And then we jumped to street lighting, 5182.
The 400 though, what municipal association?
So that includes a lot, NICOM is the big nut there, it's about 5,000 for NICOM. Then it includes the Orange County Association of Town Cities and Villages, which I send you guys emails from them when they meet, they meet the fourth Tuesday of each month. It includes the Orange County Water Authority, for you guys to be members of that, the Mudna Watershed. I think that's everybody.
Okay, I just, what the big nut was.
It's, NICOM alone is 5,000. But that enables, I mean, I don't think all of you, I know you and Matt tend to call them quite a bit, I don't think anyone else has ever really done so, but that enables you to be able to call them.
Like a 5,000 dollar insurance policy?
I, I mean, they do have resources, you know. I used to call them quite a bit when we first were formed, because we were first formed.
Yeah.
I know a couple of people up there, um, I haven't really called them lately though.
You would think they'd include the conference in that fee.
Well, you know, they have the conference at the Sagamore, which in itself is very expensive, although I will tell you, Jessica and I go to the Sagamore for a workers comp conference, which is next month, and it doesn't cost nearly as much as it costs in NICOM. So I, I don't know what they've negotiated, but as a person who runs conferences as well, I have stayed away from the Sagamore, because you have to guarantee 25,000 just in food and beverage. So, that's why we have our conferences in, you know, the Red Roof Inn and stuff.
Yeah, Holiday Inn or something like that.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, street lighting, so you have two different street lighting accounts there, one of them, the first one is just for West Point Farms. Uh, 5182, sorry, we jumped because the other ones we covered underneath each department. So, street lighting, West Point Farms, 6,000, that includes a possible replacement of a streetlight there, because those are owned by us, the streetlights. They're not owned by Orange and Rockland like all other streetlights are, and that was something that was agreed upon during a planning board process application. Years ago unfortunately, but we did try to make them Orange and Rockland streetlight approved, and the residents there were not happy with that, because they have the fancy. Yeah. This is the greens and it's, um, no, this is just West Point Farms. Yeah, this is just Apiscent Trail and Montessi Drive.
Are their lights LED?
I don't know if they're capable to be LED, because they're, they're these fancy dancy.
They had put in with a grant roll LED, right, for the whole village?
So I, so the, the, Orange and Rockland allowed you to do so many percentages to replace all the LED projects. And about four years ago, the mayor, I worked with them to get all of ours done at once, so it'd be, so I think all but one. There seemed to be one that they just are having an issue getting made, made into LED. But we have over 8,000, I'm sorry, 800 streetlights in Woodbury. So they're all LED except for one, I think. So yeah, that was all done, that was a couple of years ago, um, just like the, and that, if you see actually that 232,000 from two years ago, that half, some of it was paid from that amount. So anyway, that's street lighting, so the, the one for West Point Farms includes usage plus possibly replacing one of the lights, and then the 180 is for every other streetlight in the village. All over 32, all over the, our own roads and whatnot. And then we jumped to zoning board, so the zoning board budget went down slightly, the chairperson did a slight reduction on schools and dues, otherwise everything stayed the same. Moved to planning board. The equipment there is to upgrade their iPads, their iPads are about six or seven years old. And they are, I believe, almost 100% digital, I think there's just one member who likes paper. So, but all their applicants, applications are submitted digital now. So that's why they need iPads, um, other than that, their schools and dues went up as well, because they are joining some nationally recognized planning board association, I think it was. And that's it until employee benefits. When's the pizza gonna be ready?
It's here.
Why aren't we eating?
Because we were letting you yammer on.
Okay, so we're up to the point where we would go into executive session to discuss personnel, unless you have any questions on things we already did, in which case, ask them now, otherwise I'm gonna use the ladies room and we're gonna eat pizza and have an executive session.
So this is kind of a town issue. Folks at the dog park have complained to me about the light across the street, the streetlight.
That's a town owned.
Yeah.
It's not a street light.
At the town owned light?
It's not a street light, it's a light on a pole. It's not a street light, it's a spotlight they have on a pole there.
Because it's town owned, okay.
Yep.
So it's not us, never mind.
Yep, and we looked into it.
Having people complain to me.
Yeah, it's a, it's a spotlight on a pole, is what it is, and it's not a street light.
Gotcha, so the town will have to try and take care of that, okay.
James?
In 801, is, was that?
8010 point.
9060801 hospital.
Hmm, that's clearly to be discussed during an executive session, because it's personnel and HIPAA related.
Well, I just wondered, because there was another hospitalization.
Underwater sewer, yep.
So there, that's.
Yep, we're gonna discuss all that during, during executive session, because of HIPAA and personnel related issues.
Question under central government, the purchase of land, I mean, it's no longer on here, but what was that?
Yep, that was the money that we budgeted for Central Valley Fire Company, and they turned down.
Oh, when they rejected.
They rejected us, they said, no, we wanna keep our firehouse.
I see, okay.
So that's why it's not budgeted again, and that will actually drop off, since there will be no history for it. Any other questions about everything except for personnel issues? Because now's the time to answer, ask them, because the budget hearing is just for the public, not for you guys. So please ask now, so we can get your, your answers. Anyone? If not, can we take a break to use the bathroom and then we'll have an executive session, will we can, go ahead?
Okay, with the land preservation committee, there's no budget?
I spoke to Neil, they don't think they need any money budgeted.
Okay.
If you want to place in there maybe a small amount, 2,500, or something like that, to budget in there, that's fine. But as of right now, they don't think they're gonna need any monies. So I didn't want to sort of add if they weren't sure.
Yeah, yeah.
I'd rather keep it zero and do a modification if need be.
Okay, okay.
I was okay with that, as I said, I spoke to them at their, their meeting about it, and Neil's like, unless they do a mailer.
Yeah.
I don't know if that's gonna be.
I was, actually, and aside from land pres, I was thinking with Climate Smart too, they had mailers budgeted in, I mean, those are, you know, expenses that they don't necessarily have to take on. I see the, I went back and looked at the budget for them again, I think the farmers market, she had budgeted at like 6, 6,745 dollars.
They have a lot of time finding the location.
Yeah, yeah, so we.
He's gonna check into the Central Valley Firehouse.
That, that, that whole chunk may just be.
I know, I know.
But, um, I, you guys were cutting it to, we wanted to do 15, and she asked for 26, 855, so I'm trying to like.
Well, we did 10, and then we'll recognize the grant, which would make it 15.
Right, 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 I'm just trying to figure out what they should, uh. I think it possibly should, otherwise they're gonna have to cut some of these programs they have planned, I'm just trying to figure out which programs are not, or which line items rather, are not 100% necessary. I guess it would mostly be ads, um, we had a website, we were, we were going to do a website, we have a Facebook page, I know we're gonna put things on the village too. I don't know if a website, a separate website is necessary.
I don't think so, just add it to, I think Jessica spoke to you about that.
Yeah, but what, what'll happen is it'll be part of ours to drop down, and it'll be on there, so it'll be part of the Village of Woodbury's website, like.
Okay, so she, yeah, so we don't need a separate website, that's she budgeted in here, I don't think, because we can just put everything on the village and share on Facebook. Repair Cafe is kind of all necessary unless they wanna cut food. And, I don't know, is there?
Sure.
I do almost wish we had Lisa here, because.
Had what?
Had Lisa here.
Yeah, I think it would be good.
When I spoke to Lisa about it, I told her, I told her exactly where I thought she would be with this session. If you think, like I said, you're, you're a part of the committee, you were in the committee before getting on board, do you think we should increase it?
I mean, you're tripling the budget already.
Yeah, I know.
We're going from 5,000 to 15,000.
Yeah, we'll, we'll make do, they'll, they'll figure it out.
And she hasn't even spent the 5,000 this year, and last year she only spent 300 of the 5,000. We can always do a modification if we need to.
Okay, then that, that's perfect.
I mean.
If, if it's necessary, we'll discuss it and do a mod.
Absolutely, when it, when it comes time, if she starts spending all the money and it's getting exhausted, we can have a discussion then and do a modification.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions from anybody about the budget, otherwise we can.
Nope, we're good.
Use the bathroom, we're just gonna go into an executive session to discuss the personnel portions of the budget, so you need a motion and a second to do that.
All right, can I have a motion and a second to close the work session?
Motion.
Second, second, by McCorrelli, hold a favor.
Aye.
Go into an executive session.
I need a motion.
No, you don't close the meeting.
I'm, I already closed the meeting.
You can't close a meeting, because you have to have an executive session as part of the meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, so you want, need a motion to go to the executive session.
Okay, there you go. All right, let's get the pizza round, let's get that.